School District will come to order. In accordance with Section 402 of the Pennsylvania School Code, a notice was sent to the Board members informing them of this reorganization meeting. The meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary. We'll now stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the members of the public and to our special guests. The purpose of this annual organization meeting is to officially announce the election of the newly elected or re-elected members of the Board, to swear in those members who have not already been sworn, and to organize the Board for the coming year by electing a permanent President and Vice President. As you can see from the agenda for the organization portion of the meeting, the Board will not take up the regular legislative business at this point in the meeting. Immediately following the organization meeting this evening, the Board will be convening a regular business meeting for that purpose. So at this time, we're going to do the oath of office for the newly elected Board members. Ms. Heidi Johnson will do the swearing in.
Thank you and good evening. My designation as Pennsylvania Notary Public grants me the authority to administrate the oath of office with our elected and newly elected school directors for the Quakertown Community School District. At this time, I'd like to begin by asking each of you to join me, one by one, to take your oath of office, and we'll start in alphabetical order. We have re-elected school director, Mr. Dwight Anderson. Hi. Could you place your left hand on the Bible if you wish, and raise your right hand? Can repeat after me. I Dwight Anderson do solemnly swear.
I Dwight Anderson do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
That I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Would you please sign this? Right here, just read your signature.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Congratulations. And now we have re-elected school director, Mr. Ron Jackson. Hello there. Would you like to hold the Bible? Sure. Place your left hand on the Bible. Left hand, please. And raise your right hand.
There we are.
Okay. There we are. And repeat after me. I Ron Jackson do solemnly swear.
I Ron Jackson do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I would discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Right here, Ron Jackson, you sign it.
Okay, got it.
Okay, and we have re-elected school director, Mr. Jonathan Kern. Oh, good evening. There we go. Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I Jonathan Kern do solemnly swear.
I Jonathan Kern do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Okay. Here is you. You sign. And now we have newly elected Board Director, Brian Reimers. Hold the Bible for us. Place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I Brian Reimers do solemnly swear.
I Brian Reimers do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties.
And that I will discharge my duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. It keeps falling off here. And finally, we have newly elected school director, Chris Spear. Hello.
Hi.
She would like to hold it? Do you want that book for your dad? Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I Chris Spear do solemnly swear.
I Chris Spear do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
That concludes our swearing in.
Records the new Board members should take a seat somewhere up on the dais.
All right. Congratulations to all our new Board members. The next order of business is to elect from our holdover members a temporary president to chair the organizational meeting. The only holdover members that may be nominated for election as temporary president are Keith McCucci, Kalen Mitchell, Dave Akmanowits, and Jennifer Weed.
I wish to nominate Dave Akmanowits as temporary president.
I'll second that nomination.
Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, if there is no objection, I will declare the nominations closed. The Secretary will call the roll call. Do we need to do a roll call vote?
No, there's only just two. Voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Secretary will do the roll call.
They should be sitting somewhere.
They have to be sitting somewhere where they can.
Yes, Brian should move over there.
To where David, to the seat David left.
They can reshuffle one.
I will now open the floor for nominations for the Office of President.
I would like to nominate Ron Jackson for President.
I would like to nominate Kalen Mitchell for President.
Are there any other nominations at this time?
Takes five affirmative votes to select a president. Your roll call vote.
And we have to do the roll call vote in order that they were nominated.
Well, either you can just ask people to cast a vote when you're going through the roll call as opposed to going through it twice.
Right. I'll call the name and then they can state who they want to vote for. Do that way?
Or we use a hand.
So like a runoff rather than a one-on-one?
It's supposed to be a roll call vote to just announce who you want to vote for.
It's a roll call vote, so when I call your name, please state whether you wish to vote for Ronald Jackson as Board President or Kalen Mitchell as Board President.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Jackson.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Kern.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. McCucci.
Kalen Mitchell.
Mr. Akmanowits.
Kalen Mitchell.
Ms. Weed is out. Mr. Reimers.
Kalen Mitchell.
Mr. Spear.
Kalen Mitchell.
Ms. Mitchell.
I suppose I will vote for Kalen Mitchell.
With a vote of five to three, Kalen Mitchell wins the election.
And I will now turn over the seat to Ms. Kalen, President.
You don't do that until you finish the Vice President, then you turn it over.
Mr. Garten.
Jenny's here. Pardon me.
That's not actually what it says here, so I don't want to disagree with you. I am, though, right?
You are, but trust me.
Yes, sir.
You can run the meeting.
Thank you.
Until you get through the vice presidential election.
I will now open the floor for nominations of the Office of Vice President.
I'll nominate Ron Jackson for Vice President.
I'll nominate Dave Akmanowits.
Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Without seeing any further nomination, I suppose we will hold the election the same way we did.
Same way.
Ms. Secretary?
Mr. Jackson.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Kern.
Ron Jackson.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Akmanowits.
Dave Akmanowits.
Ms. Weed.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Reimers.
Dave Akmanowits.
Mr. Spear.
Dave Akmanowits.
Mr. Anderson.
Ron Jackson.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Dave Akmanowits.
With a vote of five to four, Mr. Jackson wins the election for Vice President.
And now I believe I turn over the seat to President Mitchell.
We need to do the shift.
First and foremost, I just want to thank my colleagues for having confidence in me and voting for me as President, and I look forward to serving our community. Thank you all, and congratulations to Ron for Vice President. And I haven't done this before, you guys, so don't be too hard on me. All right. But Anita's going to help me through this, right? I believe the next item of business, next item of business is the draft of, voting on the draft of the 2020 School Board Meeting Schedule.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposed draft of the 2020 School Board Meeting Schedule?
So moved.
As presented.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to add just a few thoughts that, since the new Board members and you have, this is, you've only seen this a couple of days, this is based off of this past year way we've done business versus previous years where we met twice a month. It gives you a little bit more time in committee meetings versus regular Board meetings. Also, if you, if there's changes that need to be made, we can do that at any time, but we would be grateful if we could do that by the first meeting in January if we make changes for the rest of the calendar year. Thank you.
Something for the new Board members to consider as well. The calendars, the start date of school is always a, people always want to know why it starts on a certain date. The administration several years ago established a criteria for when school would start that's found at the bottom of that calendar if you have an interest in learning why, just for the new Board members.
And on the months that we appear to have two meetings typically, we always want to make sure that we have meetings in place of some very critical items that we vote on, correct? So. Any other discussion, questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item up for business is to elect two representatives to the Upper Bucks County Technical School Joint Operating Committee. Since there is a vacancy and an unexpired term due to a vacancy on the Upper Bucks County Technical School Joint Operating Committee, we are recommending.
I recommend Dave Akmanowits.
I believe I'm in a two-year, right?
You're already on.
So I don't need to be.
You're already on there.
Well, thank you.
You are good until 2021 ballot.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Dwight Anderson to serve.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have closed nominations so quickly.
You need one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three total?
We need three.
And an alternate.
I nominate John Kern.
I'll be the alternate.
So to an alternate?
Let me promote, let me promote. The times that I've been there, for you new folks, great food, Christmas time, you get like awesome. Thank you. From Mexico.
That's it?
Oh, well, no, and it's much less contentious. So it's a, it's a fun place to be. If you've never been to the Tech Center, it's really awesome.
We need one more.
You need, you need.
He's on.
He said he'd be the alternate. We don't need two on. You do, you do have, last year you had Mr. Akmanowits, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Klein, and the alternate was Mr. DeLiberto.
One more primary.
I nominate Chris Spear.
I second that.
Great idea.
And just so you know, guys, when you do get nominated, I'm just going to make sure we cover our bases and ask that those who are nominated accept the nomination. Don't feel pressured into, you know, committing to something. Right.
You're letting the tech school down.
But do it. No kidding. Should we vote on these individually or how?
I would just do it collectively. That's interesting.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson and Mr. Spear for permanent picture, the regular meeting person, then Mr. Kern is the alternate.
So for the Upper Bucks Technical School, just to clarify, Mr. Akmanowits continues. Mr. Anderson has been elected to it, Mr. Spear, and Mr. Kern will be the alternate.
You need to vote, however.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
We did that one right.
Next item up for business is to elect a representative to serve as the PSBA liaison for 2020.
I nominate Ron Jackson.
I second that.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Kalen Mitchell.
Okay, I guess. Hmm. That was it. As much as I really am interested in that, I'm going to withdraw my nomination. Thanks for thinking of me.
So we have Mr. Reimers and Mr. Jackson both interested in the position. Mr. Kern. Say, state who you, I'm sorry, state who you would.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. McCucci.
Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Akmanowits.
Ron Jackson.
Mr., Ms. Weed.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Reimers.
Ron Reimers.
Mr. Spear.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Anderson.
Ron Jackson.
Mr. Jackson.
Ron Jackson.
Mrs. Mitchell.
Brian Reimers.
Vote seven to two, Mr. Jackson will be the PSBA representative for 2020.
Great. Next item up for business is our Ad-Hoc Committee Assignments. There are quite a few.
Do we need to do those tonight, or can we delay?
The President normally has solicited thoughts from all the Board members to say what you're interested in and has sort of allocated the positions amongst the committees. So you don't normally do it at this meeting because you really don't know what people are interested in.
Good.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Move to table that agenda item.
So I'll motion to table this agenda item until the next Board meeting, which I don't know the date.
Second.
Can you make the assignments, so you can make them in the interim, so that committees can function?
Oh, in the interim, I can do it. So then do I just motion to table this?
Prior to tabling, can I ask the administration to let us know what meetings will occur before our next Board meeting so that we can at least assign those committees?
We're looking for in the beginning of January, education. We need financial facilities at the beginning of the month. I have nomination for that.
I do, too.
Good.
We're on the same page.
Good. Excellent.
I would just ask if at all possible if we could have these not overlap any of the committee meetings, just in this case that a Board member.
Have the, as the interim, the past Education Committee Chair.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson there, so we can, you have that win.
It's prior to the next meeting, the hour before.
I was going to keep him in that position, thinking that he would want to remain there, so that's fine.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Yes. No problem. So please, if you haven't, let me know where you want to be.
Could we ask you for, for an expected timeline on your appointments?
They have to be done by the end of the year, is that what you said?
I need, I need to publicize them at the start of the school year. I need, I need a week's lead time for the intelligencer to have that in the paper, and that is both for the Board meeting dates, which I will put in because they've been approved, and also the committee meeting dates.
So is it safe to ask you, Ms. Mitchell, if you could have these prepared by next week for our secretary?
Yes, I can. Okay. Next item for business, service recognition for departing Board members. Dr. Harner. Board recognition.
I would like to pass that on to Mr. McCucci. Oh, oh, board recognition. Excuse me. Okay. Excuse me. You can take care of that. Good evening, everyone in the audience and new Board members. Welcome to the team of ten and, and resitting Board members and taking your seats and your oaths again. I'd like to recognize two of our departing Board members tonight. First, Mr. DeLiberto, will you come on up?
Wow, he's still here?
Until, until, interestingly, until he stood up at the podium here, was it 18 months, 20 months ago, never knew who he was, knew his wife had been very involved in a lot of our committees. Almost every year she's been, was a member of the committee and, you know, who's Rob DeLiberto? Well, I came to very much respect Mr. DeLiberto, I'm sure all the Board members have, especially for his work in our Finance Committee as our Chair, and being incredibly meticulous because he, he came to every meeting well-prepared with the tough questions, especially in the committee meetings. Fortunately for us, he didn't do that publicly before a Board, at a Board meeting, but I'm very grateful for his service. Sadly, he stepped off the Board to be the head, interim head coach of our ice hockey team. I saw him standing behind the line. It was rather interesting at a ice hockey game right before the holiday, Thanksgiving holiday. You should see him back there, very proud coach and dad of a ice hockey player. So he's going to be very involved in our community still, and we're very grateful for your service and all you've done. Thank you. Always a man of few words. Finally, Mr. Klein, sir. This is a tearjerker. You've been up here with us. You were appointed to the Board five years ago when who, yeah, and the caddies stepped down for personal reasons, and then you ran for office, and you've been up here for one full term of your office, plus two terms, two years as President, or last President. I'm very grateful that the Board selected him. He was a great person and to help us heal after. after some very difficult and challenging times in our community, and he, and I, and from the administration, we're very grateful for your service. You've always been there with a thoughtful comment privately and publicly, and we're just grateful for your leadership. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It was my pleasure to serve the community and to get to know all of you and to be comrades with you. I can tell you I'm going to miss it, but I will come back and, you know, be an audience member and make faces at you all and try to get you to laugh, so, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to thank both of you for your service. There's a lot of time that goes into this, and this is a volunteer position, so thank you all so much. Rob, thank you for bringing a different perspective, oftentimes different than the way I was thinking, but oftentimes would definitely be helpful in looking at things a different way, so I always appreciated that about you. And Steve, I think what I'm going to miss the most about you is your jokes. So I'm going to have to see if I can live up to, to your standard, but thanks, thank you both again.
You guys were both awesome. Rob, you were great, you stepped in at a time when we needed a calming voice, and Steve, you were great running the meetings and as President, so.
And Steve, you're a good leader.
And I'll be, I'll be calling you at all hours to say, Steve, what do I do? No, I'm just, I'm not going to let you off the hook that easily, Steve. Okay, so we have completed the agenda for the organization meeting, and at this time the members of the public are advised that after we adjourn the organization meeting, we will take a 10-minute break, so that's going to happen here momentarily, and then reconvene right afterward. So right now, it's almost 7:40, we will re...
Can I ask one question? Can we take maybe a shorter break? We have a guest speaker here, I don't want to keep...
That's fine. I was just reading the, yeah. So how about five minutes? Okay, so 7:45, we will reconvene. I always wanted to do that.